I'm going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'll ask our city recorder to call the roll.
Board member Bennett?
Here.
Board member Tesler?
Present.
Board member Nanki?
Yes.
Board member Claussen?
Yes.
Board member Dickey?
Here.
Board member Rogers?
Here.
Board member Benards?
Here.
Board member Clem?
Here.
And Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Now, if, young men, if you'd like to come over to the center, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Boys, I appreciate your active participation in scouting. I'm happy to have you here.
You approve for the merit badge?
Yeah, probably so. We do need a motion for approval of the special meeting agenda. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the agenda, approval of the agenda for the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for September 22, 2014.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have time now for public comment, and I see one person has signed up, David Holton. Mr. Holton, welcome.
Thank you very much.
And you know that you have three minutes?
Yes.
And you know the drill.
I know the drill. David Holton, my office address is 4742 Liberty Road South, number 210, 97302. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 4A, which is the amendment to a grant agreement for Streetscape Grant for the Roth and McGill Crest Project Downtown Salem. First of all, I want to thank some people that have been instrumental in making all of this happen. To make a project like this work in downtown historic district, these projects are expensive, and without the incentive programs that the city of Salem offers, along with federal tax credits, projects like this won't happen. You just can't make them pencil. So with that, I'd like to thank John Wales, Doug Rux, and Sri Wargan from Urban Development. They've been terrific to work with on this project, and thank you. Also from Public Works, I've been working with Lyle, Ms. Bach, and Todd Kloke, and again, that department has really helped expedite the review of the sidewalk improvements and the public improvements. So with that, I'm just here to answer any questions you have regarding amending the grant. We're asking for some additional funds due to increases that were not anticipated in the first budget. And those are the tree grates, some of the lamp holes. We felt like there might be lamp holes available here. We did not include those. And then we ran into a vault underneath the sidewalk, and we had to do some major structural work on bringing that up. So with that, we had added costs to that, but we're proceeding. We've got the project bonded. We're under construction. The project is scheduled to be completed the first part of November, so we're a little bit more of a month, and that project is 100 percent leased out. So with that, I'm going to open up any questions that you might have for me.
Are there questions from any of our members? Councilmember Tesler?
This thing is sticky. First of all, not really a question, but just an observation. I'm downtown a lot, and I am in that area a lot, and I've been just kind of watching as it's been progressing. It's really exciting to see that coming online. I mean, it really looks like you're being thoughtful, you're retaining the historic characteristics of the building, the paint even looks like the original colors. I mean, there's a lot of really good thought and design that looks like it's going into this building. Am I surprised you ran into a vault? Not really.
No. I think it wasn't that the surprise of the vault, we knew it was there, but we did not know that the actual structural lid to that vault was also the sidewalk. So in that is where we had to do it, but we did fill in, I think, two or three vaults under the sidewalk for safety.
Yeah, great. And I'm happy to hear that because those vaults are kind of a problem, just where they're located, and some of them, we don't even know where they are located. So, good for you, and I'm really happy to hear that it's 100 percent leased out.
Yes.
It looks like a beautiful place to live. I would dearly love to get a tour before you're done, hint, hint, just because I want to see what it looks like inside there. And, you know, if I wasn't own my own shack, I'd think about moving in because it's great. It looks like a great place to live, vibrant. It's really exciting. I can't wait to see it open up and get all done.
Yeah, we can't either. It's been, it's been a long project, but it's been really rewarding, and again, working with the National Park Service on this project has kept the historic integrity together. So they monitor that, make sure that we're doing it, and we're keeping the history of that building. So.
Wonderful. Other questions or comments from councilors? I'd like to add my kudos to that of Member Tesler. We certainly do commend Gail Calderazzo Doty and Doug Doty and yourself and those on your team who worked so hard to bring a dream into reality. That corner is going to be the jumpin'est place in town, I just know it. It's going to be a real success story, and kudos to everyone who's worked so hard to make it happen.
Well, great. And I think, again, the thanks to the city of Salem for all the help that they've done on the project. Again, a project like that cannot be done without the incentives that the city has. And, you know, I just hope they continue on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, I think kudos go to our city manager as well. She puts together these teams on large projects like this and really, really shepherds those teams along. So great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Was there anyone else here this evening who wanted to make comment during this public comment on the Urban Renewal Agency portion of our meeting? All right, we'll move ahead then. We need motion for action items. Member Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Urban Renewal Agency approved the First Amendment of the Grand Agreement, which is Attachment A of the staff report between the McGill Crest Roth Buildings LLC and the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Salem to increase the total grant amount for sidewalk improvements from $60,000 to $105,000, extend the project completion date to November 15, 2014, and authorize the use of $45,000 of Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area fiscal year 2014-15 Streetscape Funds.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to approve the amendment of the Grand Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And, Member Bennett, do you have a motion on Item 4A-B?
I do, Madam Mayor.
I mean, 4B?
Yes. I move the Urban Renewal Agency authorize the executive director to execute an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement attached to the staff report you've received with North Pacific Forestry, Inc. to allow a one-year extension to the completion date of construction at 2385 Fairgrounds Road, formerly known as the Cadell's property, Haynes' property.
All right.
Big one.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey. All those in favor say aye.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is there discussion?
I know you want to rush this through, but I think we have questions if we want some. I'd just like to make a note on both these items. This week, I asked staff questions, and they responded back, and I'm not sure whether councilors got answers to my copies or not, which are, you know, they're minor questions because I asked them, but, but the point, I would like to, I'd like to thank the count, staff for answering those questions, but as, this is editorial now, but it seems like we are criticized many times because we don't ask enough questions, but yet, I, when I study these agendas and I read the reports, they're boring as you can think, and I have questions, and I ask staff those questions usually on Friday evening or Saturday, and they always respond, but yet the public doesn't see that. And yet, we're being criticized for that. And so, just somehow, we need to look at that, whether we have a blog of some sort or something that shows that we're asking the kind of questions, what the arts, so the public can see that, you know, with all this technology we have today, and I'm the old person here with this big clunky thing, and when I started on the council, it was all paper, and I was one of the last ones to get through there, and Councilor Nanki was the push for that, and look what he has now, and look what some of you other people have, little tiny things. And so, the communications is so well today that we forget that there's a public out there that might want to know that we're asking questions. And so, I only throw that out there because my questions are answered, and yet, they're still out there, and the public doesn't know that. So, that's my comment to do something about that maybe in the future.
I could tell that there are about five staff people who are making notes, thinking of things we could do about that, so we will. Thanks.
Good idea. Good suggestion. All right. We do have a motion on the floor? Oh, yes, excuse me. Councilor Claussen and then Councilor Nanki.
Thank you. I did have one quick question for staff. I wasn't able to get my questions in prior to reasonable time today, so I thought I'd just wait. On this, and I'm not sure who is the correct person for this, city manager, you can direct it wherever, I just wanted to make sure a one-year extension, because this predates me on council, and it's something that I knew nothing about before reading this report, is this a realistic timeframe extension for them to be able to move? Is there something moving on this? Is it, or is it kind of a conceptual phase still? I don't really know much about it.
It is moving, and the property owner was agreeable to the one-year extension, and Doug Rux from Urban Development can get more information.
Doug Rux, Assistant Director, Urban Development. We've been working with the property owner. They have actually gone through the process and put together plans for the 2,900-square-foot building. They went out to the building community to get quotes for construction of that. They have submitted plans into Building and Safety to go through the plan review process. When they came out of that, we've also talked to them about Toolbox Grant programs in North Gateway and loan programs, so it is moving forward, and they are agreeable to the one year. So if all of these things continue to move forward, they hopefully should have this building done in one year. They also have the opportunity, if they're in the middle of construction on the building, and November 6 of 2015 comes along, we will work with them, and possibly then you could see, come back, and maybe we do a couple-month extension on that to make sure they get to the completion date.
Great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that plans are in and it's moving. Thanks.
Councilor Nanki, you had a question?
Pointing to Councilor Claussen.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Appreciate all the help I can get. All right, we do have a motion on the floor.
Or Member Claussen.
Thank you. It was moved by couls, by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no information reports to discuss this evening, and the Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. All right, I'll now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 22, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Tesler?
Present.
Councilor Nanki?
Yes.
Councilor Claussen?
Yes.
Councilor Dickey?
Here.
Councilor Rogers?
Here.
Councilor Benards?
Here.
Councilor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. We now need a motion for approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions and revisions to the council agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept the additions, deletions, and revisions. Are there any questions regarding those? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for comment from the council members and city manager. Are there councilors with comments this evening? Well, seeing none, our city manager, do you have comments?
I do. I have three things I'd like to talk about. One is, I mentioned to city council a few weeks ago that we're working with the Willamette Valley Genealogical Society. They will no longer be able to stay in the state library, so we're seeing if we have room in the Salem library for them. That's going well. They'll be meeting with their board in a week or so, and will get back to us, and then if that looks like what we can provide is going to work for them, we'll come back to city council in October. The second thing is there's a 2014 Healthy Communities Speaker Series that Willamette University is putting on. The next one is October 8 at 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Willamette University Law Building. They've asked me to moderate it. It's Dr. James Solis, who talks about healthy communities and how urban design can help create healthy communities, so I think that'll be very interesting. The public's invited. The panel will be David Fox from our Planning Commission, Garth Brandell from CB2, and Janice Namie from the Y. And they're doing, as you probably saw in the paper, a really great program where they're helping provide bicycles to people who need transportation, so they'll be talking about their work there as well. And then the third one, which I can't tell you how happy I am to hear this, we received word from ODOT this afternoon that our federal funding for the Minto Island Bridge project has been obligated for construction.
Oh, yeah.
And, yes.
Yeah.
So we'll be putting this out to bid in October. We'll have the bid opening on November 25, and then we'll be scheduling the construction.
Long, 30-year project.
Yes. Well, congratulations on that. I know you've worked very hard as the council members and staff. That's wonderful news. Is there other comment? All right, then we'll move to our consent, excuse me, to our public comment, and I think we have some individuals who've signed up. We do. George Jennings and Chad Freeman. Gentlemen, the floor is yours for three minutes each.
Three minutes? I used to be a lawyer. I can't do anything in three minutes.
Oh, yes, you can. I've seen you do it.
Mayor Peterson, city council members, thank you for having us here today. I'm George Jennings. I am counsel to the president of Mountain West Investment Corporation. I am the immediate past chair of SEDCOR, and our new chair is Teresa Haskins of PGE. You've, I think you've got sort of an informational item we've been presenting to you, the annual report for SEDCOR, and we just want to speak a little bit about that. During July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, SEDCOR has enjoyed the very important substantial support of the city of Salem, Marion County, and approximately 400 local employers who are members of SEDCOR. Our region, like most regions in the United States, has seen most of its economic growth successes in the retention and expansion of existing private sector employers. SEDCOR has worked tirelessly and extensively to help these private sector property tax-paying employers to make the decision to stay and to expand in our Marion Polk region. SEDCOR has also and continues to actively attempt to recruit and attract new employers to our region, and we have some successes and lots more interest in that during this year than we've had in the past five years during what we have referred to as the Great Recession. With our new president, Chad Freeman, leading the way, SEDCOR and its executive council have focused on the strengths of the communities of our region and gained a better perspective of who we are, what we are good at, what we want to be good at, and what employers want that we have to offer. Salem is the center of our region. Our region has a vast agricultural industry. It provides employment and career opportunities in industrial and retail manufacturing, transportation, construction, education, legal, accounting, medical, senior care, financial and product and service support centers. We're becoming recognized as an integral part of the Salem, Portland, Vancouver metropolitan area, and in this area, our region has substantial advantages, including more available land at reasonable prices than anybody else has in our region. We see a very bright future for the Marion Polk region, and therefore Salem. To continue the successes of which Chad Freeman will speak in a moment, it is necessary that our region continue to have, one, governmental support to make approvals fast, simple, and cost-effective, and to fund these economic development activities. All governments across the nation are funding these kinds of development activities, and sometimes the numbers that they will pay to bring an employer in would absolutely amaze you.
I'm going to have to draw your attention to the red light.
I'll be done.
No, yes, you, yes, you will. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're going to make me quit already?
Yes. Are there any questions for Mr. Jennings?
No.
Yes. Councilor Clem?
I'd like to hear what your closing statement is.
Does this mean I should continue?
He has that prerogative.
Does this mean I should continue?
Yes.
All right.
Within reason.
We need educational support to prepare our citizens for available jobs. We need community support from existing employers. We need shovel-ready land. We need an educated and an educable, motivated workforce. SEDCOR can't do this without the wonderful continuing support from the city of Salem. This has been a year in which we've experienced some great opportunities and successes, some moments when our employers and elected officials working and learning together have achieved results which have improved the lives of our citizens. Let me turn this over to SEDCOR President Chad Freeman, who will tell you more. Thanks.
Thank you very much, George. Welcome, Mr. Freeman, and you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. I'd like to start this off, though, with a note of appreciation. I want to thank you as, at the city, as well as at the council and the mayor for the support, and more than just the support, the partnership we have as we work in economic development. I know that we've been, at SEDCOR, have been working, both as George mentioned, as a region, and Salem really is in the center of this region and a huge economic driver for what we see, and we couldn't do our work without the support, but really without the partnership that we have. With that, and as George mentioned a little bit, SEDCOR is focused on traded sector jobs. Those jobs are really the jobs that we look at that compete in a national and international environment, because those, not because those jobs are any more important than others, but that those jobs are the way that we see we can materially impact and add value to our region by bringing in those jobs, because those can then support the rest of the ecosystem. We work to help add jobs in our region by recruiting, retaining, and helping these companies grow in this region, and we do this by connecting companies to the resources that they need to be successful, whether that's connecting it with the local governments, incentives, resources, or other needs. And one of those that we oftentimes see right now is workforce. How do we find the talent we need to be successful? Overall, this year, as George indicated, my second year here at SEDCOR, so it was another very successful year. We work, we measure our success in terms of jobs, of which we had over 500, I believe it was 540 new or retained jobs, but we also measure that in terms of investment. What new money has been invested here in our region? And we've seen over $40 million invested in our, in our region in the last year. Cumulatively, over the last two years, that's resulted in approximately $100 million of new investment, with over 1,300 new and retained jobs in our region. And I think as a council, as a city, and as a region, we can look at those jobs, and we can see how that pushes to individuals, to ourselves, to help grow the economy and our community going forward within our region. The other piece is, when I look at those numbers, I always ask the question, where do those success stories come from? And overwhelmingly, those have been from local companies expanding. And I think that that is a big message and one of the highest compliments that we can get in terms of, these are companies, CEOs, and firms who know what it's like to do business here, and they're finding ways to invest here so that they can have access to what we have here in our region. And that growth in the last couple of years have come from, in last year alone, came from Salem companies involving, such as Wondering Angus, Chewitt Family Foods, Garmin, who made a new investment in addition to the investment of the prior year, as well as West Salem Machine, who's continuing to invest here, their work here in West Salem. To help with this growth, we've continued to put more strategic programs in place as well. We've applied for and received a federal grant, or made it, make it in the Willamette Valley. We're working closely with our partnerships at the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Government to supply more infrastructure as well to help us grow jobs. Large Lot Inventory Study, something we're working on with the Portland Metro Region to identify our role in the market niche around large lot, particularly those, for, more specifically in our case, Mill Creek Corporate Center. What kind of investment can that be?
I will draw your attention to the red light. Sorry. Are there questions for Mr. Freeman? Yes. Councilor Benards?
I too would like to hear your concluding remarks.
Great, I was wondering, the last piece was really that marketing promotion, the work that we're doing to help tell the story about what we do as a region, what really makes us unique. In fact, Oregon Business ran an article about that, and we worked with them in September's article, if you get a chance, to look, about companies that are here and growing. And just in summary, I think you'll see that we continue to work forward to build a successful economy, building on the base of who we are, as well as looking at new companies that can help to grow our economy in the future.
Great. Thank you very much. Other questions? Yes, Councilor Rogers?
Thank you. I appreciate what you guys do, and my question is on the enterprise zones, and maybe I didn't realize we, existing businesses could use the enterprise zone. Is that for a three-year time period, the enterprise zone?
That's a great question and a great perception. Any traded, in traded sector manufacturing company who is located within the enterprise zone can apply for and receive the benefits within that enterprise zone, and those benefits are restricted to the new investment. So if a company buys a million-dollar piece of machinery, they can then receive the tax payment for three years to help them offset some of those expenses. We find most of those are local companies, that what we see that are using that, to help them make that new investment. Mitt?
I might ask a follow-up.
Other questions?
And maybe it'll come from staff, I don't know, but we must, at some point, when we see these three years mature, we should see this tax increase here at the city. I wonder if we have numbers that kind of help us understand the value of that enterprise zone investment. Is that a dumb question?
No, it's not. And we don't have that off the top of our heads, but it's something we could put together.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming this evening. Appreciate your importance. All right. Was there anyone else here who did want to speak during this public comment time for items that are on the agenda but not public hearings or deliberations? All right, then we will move to the consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.2A by Councilor Tesler.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benards to move the consent calendar for approval, with the exception of the item 3.2A being polled by Councilor Tesler. Is there discussion? Councilor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention what items are on the consent calendar tonight. 3.2B authorizes the transfer of appropriation authority in the general fund for the purpose of purchasing and implementing a new budget software system, which we know the city manager and her budgeting staff are probably thrilled about.
We are.
Yeah. It's, it's really good to see us moving forward in that area. And also, 3.2C authorizes the hiring of additional seasonal staff in parking services to work with the enforcement if changes are made in the parking ordinance to limit downtown, or to create a limit in downtown Salem during the holiday season of three hours.
That's right.
Okay, good. That's how I understood it. I'm glad I got that. And we're going to, I think, for my ward, just more good news, demolition of dangerous buildings at 1030 and 1034 Jefferson Street. These are two burned-out buildings that have been sitting there for quite a while, and we're very pleased to see them coming down.
That's the end. All right. Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that correct? We do have the motion on the floor.
We do have a motion on the floor.
To approve the consent calendar with the item that's being polled. To approve the consent calendar with the item that's being polled. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We now turn to public hearings. Would the recorder please introduce the first public hearing?
Yes, the Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of engrossed ordinance bill number 1714 relating to the licensing and regulation of medical marijuana facilities, creating new provisions, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor and Council, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. We don't have a formal staff report for each night since we have discussed this ordinance. I do want to note, however, that in your additions packet, there is a revised ordinance. There was a couple of omissions in the, in the version of the ordinance that went out in your original packet. Those delete one of the findings and reduce the setback from parks and playgrounds from 1,000 feet to 500 feet, which is consistent with council's motion.
All right. Do we have individuals signed up? Yes, we do, for our public hearing. And I will make it, just a couple of statements, since there are several people who have signed up. As you've probably already observed, every person speaking has three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. And I do ask people to please try to be respectful of others' time by concluding your own remarks at the end of your three minutes. Another thing is, just a sort of a housekeeping, is that we do not, in fact, we will not encourage or allow applause or cheering. Sometimes, when we have a lot of people, I know sometimes there are warm feelings on one side or another of an issue, sometimes the audience, it does get a little bit boisterous, as we say, shall we say? So tonight, we'll try not to do that. So I'll call usually two people at a time. We have two podiums. It kind of helps to move, move it along. So we'll start with Michael Warren and Rebecca Engel. And you may choose whichever podium is most convenient for you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mike Warren, I own the Seven Leaf Dispensary at 1026 Commercial Street Northeast. And I appreciate you making the change, the city attorney, for the park, the park 1,000 foot to 500 foot. So that was my first question. There are two issues in particular that affect my dispensary. One is the definition of what a park is. There's a certain parcel called the mouth of the Mill Creek that is very close to our dispensary, and I just wondered if anyone in this room could give us a definitive statement of if that is considered a park. If it is not, then there's no issue. Excuse me, if there is, then I was hoping that we could define a park being that which is accessible to people. This one in particular has, you know, no trespassing signs and barbed wire fence surrounding it, so it's clearly inaccessible. Second issue that seems to, may face us, is the SHA properties. I can't find a list of where those properties are located, so I would encourage the council to change that so that there is an exemption for major arterial abutment in our dispensary's case. That would work in the same way as the other residential zoning. And then lastly, I have a list of the current facilities that are approved from the state, and a little clarification on the full license versus provisional license that I'd like to distribute to the council members, if that's appropriate. And that's all the time I need.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Ms. Warren, thank you for coming down, and I want to ask you about the housing authority question. Do you have a housing authority facility within 500 feet of where you would locate your store?
Well, like I mentioned, I can't find a definitive answer to that question. There are some townhouses that are within the 500-foot range of our dispensary that are owned by the same property owner who does have some SHA property that's above the former YWCA on Broadway. So it's something that I just seek the clarification in order for us to feel confident.
Can we?
I don't, it'll take us a minute. We can find it on our website, but I don't think we have that right here. But we can get that.
It'd be helpful, I think, for him to have this clarified. Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Engel, welcome.
Hi, Rebecca Engel, 610 Commercial Street, and I'm here, can do, neighborhood association did not put, did not, it's a neutral stance that we've taken. We haven't taken a stance either direction necessarily, but there were some questions that came up at our last meeting, and so, and some discussion about it, but the question that we had about the ordinance had to do with the signage and whether or not the signs could be regulated within that ordinance somewhat. That was a concern, because we thought that, one of the main concerns in a lot of the neighborhoods was the kind of bright, gaudy signs that drew, drew a lot of attention. In a couple of neighborhoods, that was, or had, you know, some kind of interesting signage. So, and so I think for, so that everyone can sort of live with this, it might be nice to have some kind of regulations on that as to color, size, and I know that's done in some other, like historic district and stuff like that, so I don't know how that can be addressed in this ordinance, but if it can, we thought that that was one thing that might make this work a little better for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. First of all, Rebecca, congratulations on winning the Spirit of Salem Award.
Yay.
Great, great job. I would, managers, I'll ask the city attorney, I'd like to follow up on Rebecca's question about regulation of signage and what the, what the sign regulations look like. Could you?
Certainly. Dan Atchison, City Attorney, Mayor, members of council. The Oregon Constitution, the U.S. Constitution substantially limit our ability to regulate signs as to a particular speaker. So we can't have specific regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries. The general prohibitions to size, location, illumination, that sort of thing, that apply to any other business, would apply to the dispensaries as well.
So within, so whatever applies within that, like business district that they're located in, is what?
That's correct, yes.
I'm sorry. He was sorry.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. And I want to encourage everyone to try to speak right down into your microphones, both the testimony, those giving testimony and counselors as well. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good.
All right. I'm in opposition of the overregulation.
Can you introduce yourself first, please, and state your name, your address, and your ward?
I'll get to that, Madam Mayor. But I just wanted to say that I'm in the opposition, or in opposition of overregulation of medical marijuana facilities. So, let me start. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Scott Hicks, and I am the PRF at Piper's Holistic Essentials, Pipers, a state-registered facility located at 1729 Center Street. We're not open presently due to the moratorium, and I'm hoping to change some hearts and minds and end the moratorium early with minimal restrictions and minimal fees. This is why. I'm going to speak fast, so listen up. A PRF is accountable for any intentional or unintentional action of its owners, officers, managers, employees, or agents, with or without the knowledge of the PRF. All camera coverage, all secured restricted access areas, all points of sale areas, all points of entry to or exit from secured or restricted access areas, all points of entry to or exit from a registered facility out to 15 feet. Surveillance recordings are kept for a minimum of 30 days in our inform format that can be easily accessed or viewable. A PRF must have written detailed policies and procedures and training for employees on the policies and procedures that at a minimum cover the following: security, testing, transfers of usable marijuana and plants to and from the facility, operation of a registered facility, required record keeping, labeling, violations, and enforcement. I must have available for the OHA documentation of the cost of doing normal and customary business, including costs related to transferring, handling, securing, ensuring, testing, packaging, and processing usable marijuana, amount of money paid by each patient or caregiver, laboratory reports of all testing, documents and information required to be maintained in these rules must be retained by the PRF for at least one year. A PRF must provide the authority with any documentation required to be maintained in these rules upon request, in the format requested by the authority, or permit the authority access to such documentation on site. I must have a copy of the person's picture identification. When it comes to inspections, the authority must conduct an initial inspection of every registered facility within six months of approving an application to ensure compliance with these rules, and must conduct a routine inspection of every registered facility, at least every year. The authority may conduct a complaint inspection at any time, following the receipt of a complaint that alleges a registered facility is in violation of these rules. The authority may conduct an inspection at any time, if it believes for any reason that a registered facility or a PRF is in violation of these rules. There are approximately 182 registered facilities in Oregon presently. That's $768,000 a year to run this program. Trust the state to do its job. Suspend the moratorium early, lower the fee to $250 for admin, come back in a year and review it if there's a problem. Now, dispensaries are here for people with debilitating medical conditions, like cancer, glaucoma, Alzheimer's disease, positive HIV and AIDS, also the effects related to the treatment of these medical conditions.
Excuse me. Excuse me, your three minutes is up. I'll have to ask you to stop. Thank you. Are there questions from any of our, are there questions? Excuse me. Are there questions by any counselors? All right, thank you. Counselor Bennett, you have a question?
Yeah, just one. What does PRF stand for?
It stands for the Person Responsible for the Facility.
Ah, okay.
There's 14 of them in Salem.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Glenn Christensen, followed by Mark Cusick?
Thank you.
Excuse me, is it Mark Cusick?
Yes.
All right.
My name is Glenn Christensen, and I live at 1319 Elm Street Northwest, Salem 97301. I oppose this measure in its entirety. I own Oregon Chronic Soluions, and I'm proud to say we tied with two other dispensaries with lease extractions in the state. We do our job well. Here in Oregon, we pride ourselves on being truthful and practical. We've got a group of Boy Scouts here, let's tell the truth. For instance, we know when it's raining and when it's not. The federal government says that cannabis is an illegal, is a dangerous drug. We know for a fact that it is not. This is a lie. Okay, by allowing dispensaries to operate, we prevent sales to minors, prevent revenues to divert, diverted to criminal groups, because no one gets what I got left. I got such little left, it's ridiculous. Okay? I don't know if any of my peers would be stupid enough to risk everything we've worked for so hard, only to throw it away due to regulatory inspections, finding irregularities due to illegal actions. Okay? We're not going to rent buildings and put up signs if we're going to break the law. That's ridiculous. Okay, as to the facts and findings, adding in minors congregate would enable anyone with a negative view on dispensaries to produce an environment that would force an otherwise legal dispensary to close. Number two, forcing dispensaries to ply again with the city after being certified and inspected by the state causes undue hardship on an already regulated-to-debt industry. Number three, forcing a licensed business to move will produce lawsuits for the city. Number four, $2,000 of the prorated fee, which amounts to $4,000 a year actual fee for each dispensary. We already pay $4,000 a year to the state. That would mean I'd have to put $800 a month into a bank account just for that. This is my paycheck. I get $1,500 a month from a CPA firm. There ain't no more blood in this term. Number five, just because the city has a right to set time constraints doesn't make it less discriminatory. Number six, amending the separation requirements on parks to 500 feet does nothing to protect children, since children are not at risk from dispensaries. I'm a grandfather. No one's going to protect a kid better than me. Number seven, by not limiting the number of dispensaries, we allow the public to determine the market, as it should be. And finally, using public housing boundaries as a restriction is biased and does nothing to prevent the supposed crime worries that the city is imagining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Christensen? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony.
Good evening.
Yes, Mark, Mark Cusick?
My name is Mark Cusick. My wife and I own Herbal Grasslands, located at 1130 Roybonne Avenue. Have some statistics for you. One person in the U.S. dies every 19 minutes from prescription drug overdose. Dr. Sanjay Gupta, CNN medical correspondent. 2010 drug overdose deaths in the U.S. were 38,329. 22,134 of those, 57.7% involved pharmaceuticals, zero marijuana. Drugwarfax.org. 2010, 2 million people reported using prescription painkillers non-medically for the first time within the past year, nearly 5,500 a day. Center for Disease Control and Prevention, July 2013. 2011, 41,340 drug overdose deaths in the U.S., 22,810 of those, 55% related to pharmaceuticals. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, July 3, 2014. Number one, gateway drug to heroin use, pharmaceutical pain meds. Salem Police Department Landlord Training Seminar, 2011. Oregon leads the nation in abuse of painkillers. Doctors wrote more than 900,000 scripts for opioids in 2013. Coin News 6, September 2014. Medical marijuana laws may reduce painkiller overdoses. States that have legalized marijuana for the managing chronic pain have significantly fewer deaths than prescription painkiller overdoses each year. JAMA Internal Medicine, CNN Health, August 2014. My question's to you. How much does the city charge Rite Aid, Walgreens, et cetera, for a city business license? How many times per year do the police department do a surprise inspection on these facilities? How much do you charge these facilities, or bars, or any other business when the police respond to their businesses? Quite frankly, I have found that if you give government $100, they will figure out how to run a program. If you give them $1,000, they'll figure out how to run that program and spend all $1,000 of it. Your fees are too high. You don't need to go there. We're already regulated by the state, inspected by the state. You have full access to that report. You can see that at any time. If there's a complaint, I invite you to come out and do an inspection based on complaints. But to just charge a fee because you can charge a fee, that's wrong. Fees never get reduced. I can guarantee you, the state's not going to reduce our $4,000 fee, even though they've collected 700 and some odd thousand dollars, and their budget's only 400,000. We're not going to get that back, so I don't see how we're going to get your, get money back from the city. So I would ask you to really consider what that fee really, truly needs to be, and how much you really need to do an inspection of our facilities.
Thank you. Your time is up. Are there questions for Mr. Cusick? All right, thank you very much. Joe Wells, followed by Elizabeth Pruden.
Hello, my name is Joe Wells, and I work at the Mid Valley Patient Resource Center. And quite a few of the points I wanted to touch on today have been covered pretty well.
Excuse me, could you give your address or your ward number, please?
My address is 1910 Harret Drive Northwest.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And, but the hours of operation, I would like to, to also, I would say I'm in opposition to, I see every night, like right now, we're open till 9:00 PM, and I have a hard time getting out of there before 9:30 myself, just due to people getting off work and limiting, it seems to be mostly be a limit to the access people are going to have, whereas there are already state regulations against consuming, consuming going on, on the premises, so, and I don't understand how late at night would, would cause a problem for the city, or the police, or safety of the public, or anything, when it's really just people basically stopping at a pharmacy to get their meds before they go home after work, or, or anything. And the second thing I wanted to touch on was the city inspections by the police department, and don't want to say anything bad about the police department. They've been trained very well to deal with criminals and criminal activity and things like that. I would have to ask, though, are they the best to inspect a legitimate person's business, where the city already, I believe, has a code enforcement section? And it would seem to me that maybe the code enforcement section would be better at doing inspections and helping, if there is a problem, helping to address that problem with the legitimate legitimate business owner to correct rather than the police department who I don't feel would be trained in that fashion. But that's about all I had to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Wells? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Elizabeth Pruden followed by Pearl Rudd. Good evening, Elizabeth.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Pruden. My address is 4397 South Place Northeast, Salem, Oregon. I step to you guys as a patient. I am going on my second year of being a patient here. And the reason I wanted to speak up was to appeal to you guys of the difference that it can make. I have degenerative disc disease that was caused by an older person running a stop sign and slamming very hard into my vehicle. The last thing I expected at 31 years old was to be bedridden, let alone be on a lot of OxyContin's that I did get addicted to. I have two small children. I wasn't able to take care of my kids. I was zoned out of my mind. I ended up speaking to what I call mom and dad at their dispensary and they told me, you know what, why don't we get you legal and see what we can do different for you? They helped me withdraw off of all of the OxyContin with no puking, no nausea, no actual withdrawal symptoms due to the cannabis. It altered my life. Two years later now, I have just graduated with two associate's degrees from Shemeketa Community College and six months in on my bachelor's for forensic psychology, something I couldn't have done had I still been on OxyContin's, something that even with my kids, I get out and play with them now and I'm conscious of what I'm doing with my kids. So I come to you guys pleading. The dispensaries have altered my life. They've altered my kids' lives because I'm mom again instead of a mush that's in bed zoned out of her mind. So I'm very opposed to all these extra regulations making it 10 times harder for them and let alone harder on us patients who have to travel to get our medicine. So with that, I truly hope you guys take that into consideration. The difference is that it can actually make for people like me, people who are even more disabled with me that are fighting cancer and everything. Being able to eat is something that all of us could never imagine taking for granted. And medical marijuana makes that a chance to have and have a healthy appetite, not puke, not constantly be in pain. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Pruden? All right. We appreciate your testimony. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Pearl Rudd followed by Margot Lucas. Is Pearl Rudd still here?
Yeah, that's me. I'm good. She signed just for her opposing it.
She's not going to testify?
She just wants to say she opposes the measure.
Oh, I see. All right. Okay. Thank you. Margot Lucas followed by Dana Kleis.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I sent an email earlier pointing out some, what I believe are mistakes about some of the amendments that didn't make it into the ordinance. So I pointed those out to you. I hope that you've seen that. I don't think it probably needs any further discussing, but if you had any questions about that. I just wanted to say, we could probably use some more clarification on the air filtration issue. Perhaps it should be complaint-driven. I'm not sure how we're going to monitor keeping those smells inside. So just some food for thought there. Also, I wanted to again suggest a sunset clause on the police department overseeing the program for the reason that code enforcement would probably be a more practical and economical way to go as well. Also, I sent some comments about the drug-free school zone and the coal memo. I hope you all received those. And I think I made my comments clear and I think that's going to be it for tonight.
All right. Are there questions? Counselor Dickey.
Hi, Margot. Thanks for coming down. I didn't get your email for some reason, but I did want to clarify, I spoke with our city attorney just before the meeting and the wrong version of the ordinance had been sent out in the original council packet and we were sent the corrected version just before council.
Very good. Glad to hear that.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Rogers and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Margot, on the staff report, are you basically in favor of this report? What's the overall feeling from you?
Am I in favor of the staff report?
You said on the committee, right?
Right, right. I would say I was in favor of some parts of it and maybe some parts no.
Okay. So what are we, 50 percent?
I haven't really thought about that. Like I say, I've made some suggestions. Those would be the issues that we may still have, that I believe we still have. You know, I think we could certainly improve, but you know, I think we've worked on it and we've come to some agreement and you know, I think that's probably where it stands.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Margot, so did you ever see, did you see the additions and deletions for this evening's meeting?
I have not seen them.
Okay. So my guess would go back to this other direction. Where does the public find the additions, deletions and corrections that come out late on Monday afternoon?
They are on the website and we have copies of them with the shellish sheet on the front next to where people signed up to speak.
Okay. So this is a place that Margot might be able to find the copy over there, the corrected version.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Seek and you shall find.
There we go. Other questions for Margot before she leaves? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Dana Kleis followed by Denise Concanon.
Hi. My name is, excuse me, my name is Dana Kleis, K-L-E-I-S. I reside at 233 Jerome in Silverton. I'm a retired social worker. I had worked for about 30 years in emergency response in Los Angeles County doing just after-order emergency work and saw the drug abuse that went along with a lot of it and the material effects that went with it. A couple of things that came up for me was that personally, I gotten and had been involved in an auto accident while working and which led to my having to retire after about 30 years. And I was ready to anyway, but that's beside the point. The point being that without medical marijuana, I would still be on OxyContin and a couple of other things along the same line. With that, I've been able to, with my doctor's help, reduce what I was taking with OxyContin with a replacement with medical marijuana. That's just speaking from myself. The other question I have is I feel a bit probably ill-informed and maybe just making a dumb question here, but through all of the things, the articles I've read in the paper, everything that I've heard in these, in council meetings, I have yet to hear anything that addresses the taxation, not just the amounts that are going into taxation and designation as to where they will be spent. But are we to look at medical marijuana as a taxable item in itself? Will recreational marijuana be taxed the same way as medical marijuana? Those are just open questions right now that I have not been able to find the information on. Perhaps that's my not looking hard enough or long enough. But I would ask the council to address those issues anyway and leave it at that. Anyway, I just wanted to add that as to taxation more than anything.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Clann?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that within this ordinance on medical marijuana dispensaries under this public hearing, there is no addressing of taxation. That doesn't preclude the council in the future from doing it, but there is none in the subject we're discussing tonight in terms of taxation on medical marijuana dispensary or recreational in this ordinance.
That's what I said, that I may be a bit ill-informed in waiting and I understand the results of the election may have something to do with it too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony coming down. Denise Concanon, welcome.
Hi. My name's Denise Concanon. I'm the owner of the Holistic Choice at 1045 Commercial Street Southeast Salem. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilperson, chief. Again, one for your time, one for the considerations that you had with the ordinance and changing those so that my business may possibly open again and I may be able to employ the seven people that I had to lay off the day that I got closed. I have been operating in the city in a legal gray area prior to this and I had spoke on that last time. I am thankful for being able to license. I was testing prior and doing multiple tests with patients. I have been in the industry for about 30 years now. Part of them is a tincture that we use and I just want to speak on that just briefly, that it works for patients getting off of OxyContin. It works for patients who have seizure disorders. It works. And if we take care of one mom in the city, then we should be allowed to be here. Taxing us and regulating us, we're already being done by the state and they're doing a wonderful job. It was public knowledge. It was put in the paper. I was glad. It opened it up for all of us to see how each other's doing. We've formed an association to try to help police each other and to make sure we're doing a good job in the city of Salem. We are the city's capital here. We want to do a good job. That's why we've opened our business and looked for licensing and looked for regulations. We are regular business owners who've made a choice to open up cannabis dispensaries very out of the box. Some of us for need, some of us for desire for something different. But all of us strive to be good business people, people who want to employ others within the city of Salem, people who want to be appreciated by the city's mayor, attorney and the chief of police as being good businesses. The businesses around me have succeeded better because I have been there. Ask them. New York Pizza, Harvest Music, Dizzy Smoke Shop that they put in that empty vacant lot, that building because I was coming into that neighborhood. And now there's a full business going on there, lots of business, foot traffic. And I appreciate that. I can move to Portland. I don't want to. I can move to Independence. I don't want to. My children go to school here. I'm engrossed here. This is my neighborhood. I want to make it good. I'm a good business person. Please look at what you're doing. Licensing and regulation is not necessary. We're good business people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much. Was there anyone else in the chambers this evening that wanted to testify and wasn't a, and were not able to get your name on the list? Would you like to go to the podium and introduce yourself and give your name and your address, please? Good evening. Please state your name and your address and you have three minutes.
My name is Michael Wolfholm. My address is 1038 Ipsen Street Southeast Salem, Oregon, 97302. And I am the guest, I'm the speaker for Oregon Sweetie Revival Cannabis Garden Club. We are a statewide patient-for-patient cannabis garden club because only 2 percent of our state has safe access tonight after wasting millions and millions of dollars last year for dispensary access. This garden club was formed in 2010 by medical cannabis patients across the state because of the exploitation of the black market and the folks, the sick folk, that were being used and abused as this system went along. Like a freight train in the night, our dispensary act finally came to play thanks to Stormy Ray and a few other individuals that were able to put it together for the patient group of the state. That is 65,000 Oregonians. And of the 65,000 Oregonians that are subscribing, members of the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program who pay their taxes, abide by the law and follow the rules, only 2 percent of those patients tonight have safe access. Our garden club members over in Malheur County with their moratorium, we are losing patients at a rapid rate. We have sick folk with cancer that have to drive over 250 miles for a safe access so they can be law-abiding. Folks are losing. The black market is still winning in our state and here we are with the medical marijuana laws and we're talking about more regulations. How can we restrict safe access any further than it already is? We wasted millions of dollars of state taxpayers' money to get that dispensary stuff pushed. Lobbied, 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 blocked, protested, sat in the state senate floor, listened to the testimony of the law enforcement and I'm just here to say, please do not do that to this community. There are sick people here tonight and people all throughout Marion County that need safe access and these are law-abiding people who have never broken the law in their life. I just want you to think about this. Who's going to win in Marion County? The black market or is Marion County going to step up and is the city of Salem going to step up and say no more to the black market, no more to the illegal drug trade? We're going to defend our business owners and we're just going to, we're going to trust the state. And I speak for a patient corps of 350 members across the state of Oregon that are members of this garden club that I am part of.
Thank you very much. I have to draw your attention to that. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Tesler.
Could you further elaborate on what a garden club is? I have an idea and it's probably not what it is to you.
Well, a garden club to us is that the medical marijuana patient in the state of Oregon, when they subscribe to the medical marijuana laws and pay their fees, they are entitled to have access to growing their own plants. And a healthy relationship in gardening, whether it's vegetable gardening or growing their own medicine, is something we encourage to help these individuals that are in these moratorium counties right now while folks like yourself are trying to figure out what you're going to do. And this is the safest way for these folks because it eliminates the black market from getting involved. It's other medical marijuana patients who are legally entitled to share their access with other medical marijuana patients across the state and they're not eliminated to that.
Thank you very much. That was helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down tonight. Question on black market versus dispensary?
Correct.
What's the price differential between?
Well, I can give you an honest ounce price. I have patient members over in Malheur right now where Stormy Ray happens to be from and she's one of the members that helped sign the dispensary act and help push it. Over there, right currently, the ounce ratio for the, you know, for what they're getting is just slightly under $140. Now, that's what the black market's doing. Now, the folks that are forced with all these regulations and they have to pay into all these fees, these folks have to push clear across the state that way. And that just, it's just criminal and it's illicit and it, telling you the truth, I think it's a burden to law enforcement. I think that the law enforcement are burdened enough. We've got all kinds of issues going on and it's being pressured down into the law enforcement. And I think that if we can eliminate that burden for those folks by trusting our state-regulated program and by the votership of our state, that here in this wonderful city we call Salem, I'm telling you, this is a safe haven. I hear folks that drive clear from Ontario to come to Salem to Oregon because this is the, this is the only safe access they can trust. I have patient members that do it. And so you folks here, you're cutting out a whole different demographic. And with the struggles that Salem has gone through over the years with all these other things besides cannabis, we need to think outside of the box here. How much has Salem struggled with the Waterford Park?
I'm going to interrupt just for a second. Counselor Nanki, has he answered your question?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I am going to have to ask you to conclude your remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's an honor to be allowed to speak.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. That brings to a close the number of people who were here to speak on this issue. Counselor Nanki, Counselor Bennett, there was a request I saw from a neighborhood association to keep the record open. I know perhaps you have a motion prepared or not?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move the
Madam Mayor, I move the public hearing on ordinance number 17-14 remain open for written comment until October 6th.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to keep the record open until October 6th is their discussion.
We're the second.
Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I don't like doing this. I kind of hoped, coming into the meeting, we would be able to resolve this this evening. But there've been a number of issues raised in the public hearing as well as a request, as you mentioned, from a neighborhood group, asking that we keep the record open until there, at least one neighborhood group, there may be others, have an opportunity to submit written comment. And so I'd like to accede to that as well as give us a chance to work with the information we received this evening.
All right. I believe Counselor Dickey is next, and then Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, for a point of clarification, how does that put us with our, the expiration of our moratorium, and will that be sufficient time for us to make a decision?
Madam Mayor, Counselor Dickey, the record would essentially close 5:00 PM on the 6th. However, your next council meeting is the 13th, so you could conclude deliberations on the 13th. And then if you had amendments that you wanted to make to the ordinance at that point, you could, you know, go through those motions at that point, and we could bring back a second reading on the 27th, which is the same day that the moratorium expires. The ordinance does have an emergency clause that states that it takes effect on the 27th, so that would, that would work.
Counselor Benars and then Counselor Nanki.
I had a small question. Ahead of doing with the extension to October 6th, does that include making, I think it does, include changes that might occur? Margot Lucas, as an example, had said that there were some issues within what she had been presented with that weren't accurate, and the changes that we had talked about weren't reflected.
Madam Mayor, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. The two changes that are in your additions packet are very minor. One eliminates a finding regarding the cap that was deleted from the ordinance. The second was just a correction. There was a motion at the prior first reading to reduce the setback from parks and playgrounds from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. That wasn't incorporated into the ordinance that came out in your original packets. That's been corrected in the additions. Those are the only two changes to the ordinance. All the other engrossments that you made, all eight amendments, those were all done except for that one to parks, and that's been done now, too.
So, reiterate, then, there's no way after this point, we'll leave it a public hearing, but there's no way to change?
No, that's not correct. So, you're going to continue the open record period, you know, through the 6th. You're going to come back on the 13th and proceed with deliberations. At that point, you can make further changes to the ordinance.
Thank you. That's the answer I was looking for.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items. One, if we find things that we may want to make changes on between the 6th and the 13th, I would encourage folks to contact the city attorney so that it's possible to get engrossments made, if that's a new word that I just created. Excellent.
To clarify that, Counselor, you're referring to councilors contacting the city attorney?
Councilors contacting, our legal counsel, our city attorney, so that those could be ready just to move that process faster between the 13th and the 27th, because we'll be down to two weeks at that point before the moratorium expires. And then in regards to the ADA council items that were brought forth last meeting, item number four in regards to the fee for applications and renewals, this has amended the ordinance to provide for a fee of $2,000. I am not mistaken, that was to be a maximum number, a not-to-exceed number, not a hard $2,000 number because we were bouncing between 1,000 and 4,000 and 2,000 based on what it would cost for us to, and it's very close in what the police department puts forth in fees excluding city attorney and what have you, but it was a maximum value in my recollection. Not to exceed 2,000, not hard written 2,000, which is hard written into the ordinance as well.
Generally, the fees are a dollar amount, so that's the number that we understood that council was interested in seeing in terms of how much time we anticipate the police department and planning to take.
If I may, Madam Mayor. So, the engrossed ordinance, section 31.020A, says the fees for licenses required by this chapter shall be set by resolution of the city council in an amount not to exceed $2,000. So upon adoption of the ordinance on the 27th, we'll have a fee resolution for you as well, and you can make the final decision on the fee, but the ordinance will cap that fee at up to 2,000.
Is that what your question is?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Then I have a question because I remember requesting that we have an opportunity to, that staff come back with us after a period of time so that we might review that fee and see if it is appropriate or if it needs to be changed. Didn't we have a discussion? I know we had a discussion about that.
And we do bring fee resolutions back to council every year, and so there would be an opportunity then to review.
I thought we were going to do it like after six months.
We're going to review after six months. That's right.
So, should that be written into?
It doesn't need to be in the ordinance. Staff has that down, and we'll come back to you at the appropriate time to review the fees and what our costs have been. It doesn't need to be part of the ordinance.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Just to clarify this for me, if you could, the ordinance sets a cap at $2,000 in this ordinance. But you will also bring us a separate fee resolution that can be, that will be a separate vote. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, the number in that resolution can be anything, up to $2,000.
Exactly.
Okay. And so between now and the 13th, what would best move this along? Would it be that we contact you along the way and ask you to write us up amendments? If people have amendments they want to have done, so we're ready on the 13th with this stuff done?
And I would encourage councilors not to have discussions outside of the public meeting regarding the ordinance.
Right.
But if you do have suggestions for things you'd like to see, come deliberations on the 13th, let me know, and I'll be happy to write those up for you as motions.
As individuals.
Yes.
You don't want a group of us coming in.
I try to avoid groups of councilors.
Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Benars.
Thanks, Mayor. You actually asked the question I was going to ask, and I was just trying to remember what time period it was that we had asked to have a follow-up report. And I was thinking it was four months or something.
It was late that night.
My recollection was six. But if you wanted to give us a different direction, you can do that.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, here we are talking about a fee, here we are talking about, you know, we've even discussed, gee, you know, the police do it, or maybe at some point code enforcement would do it, you know, that's a lesser cost. And I'm just thinking, as we move into budget, that might be a good time for us to be thinking about what is the actual cost of this? How does it affect our departments? And, you know, would that be a factor? And I understand the licensing fees are separate from that, but there's more involved in that than just the licensing fee, how it affects the department. So I was just counting October, six months from October is April.
Which is a good time for the budget.
Which is a good time, okay. Perfect.
I would like to interject that I don't, I'm, I want to be certain that we are not going to be changing this ordinance to have code enforcement be the department that actually does these investigations. We had a very lengthy discussion about the importance of our law enforcement officers who are especially trained to be the individuals in the department to do the inspections. Okay. I just want to be certain that we're all on point on that. Okay. All right. Counselor Benars.
I think I've answered my own question, but I just wanted to draw the attention to page three of the report given to us. It talks about the estimated cost to administer the licensing program, and it details basically where the monies or funds are going to be going to by estimates. And that's where we came up to roughly approximately $1,760 per licensing facility. That's why we had the 2,000. I, time and time again, we've had the discussion about potentially laying off people if we don't have revenue to cover our expenses, and this is just yet another place that it isn't free, parking isn't free, and licensing programs aren't free. It takes money, it takes, it takes staff time to put things together, even in the minimal amount of licensing that might need to be done. So I'm just wanting to make sure that we're not just having a program and not covering the cost of that program because we're hurting already.
I appreciate that, and I would like to be certain that we're able to adjust that fee if we find as a council at some point that staff does recommend to us that a greater fee might be necessary by proven statistical record-keeping of the cost of actually monitoring and reviewing and inspecting the facilities.
Or decreasing, hopefully.
Well, I would like to be, I would like to be certain that we're not heading down a road here where we're going to try to do the cheapest type of enforcement or the cheapest type of review and inspection possible because we're feeling constrained by budget. I don't want this going in that direction. Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yes, I just, I think we're, are we still voting on the motion, or can we?
We have a motion on the floor.
Ask questions afterward? Because I still have some other questions, but I think the motion is to hold the record open, so.
Yeah, do you want to ask your?
I'm not sure. We haven't ventured well beyond that here.
We may have.
We're debating next, we're debating the motions that'll be made in a couple of weeks right now. You just have to, you just got to get a program, Clem.
And I'm ready, but I want, I call for the questions. The motion has been.
All right. Counselor Bennett, would you like to repeat the motion just for clarity?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the public hearing on ordinance bill number 17-14 be held open until October 6th, 5:00 PM, October 6th.
That is for written testimony only.
Written testimony only.
All right. And it was seconded by?
Counselor Benars.
Counselor Benars, thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Counselor Clem?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councilors received a memo from the city attorney, but with regard to drug-free zones related to medical marijuana. And I, is it, is it, can city attorney just help us, just for the public's benefit and other folks, make sure we understand what that means in terms of enforcement? Why, we have it in our ordinance, at least currently existing, so can you just explain what that memo summarized it for?
As noted in, on the first reading, it's September 8th, and I followed up with a confidential memo to the councilors, which I can release if it's your pleasure. Basically, we suggested that you apply the same standards as the drug-free zone, the federal drug-free zone, not so much that we think it's a great policy direction, but because the federal government through the US DOJ has indicated that they will continue to enforce federal drug laws to the extent that they violate, that conduct violates their principles. They, in the cold memo that was provided, they talk about eight different principles. One of those is selling drugs or using drugs near minors. They don't specifically talk about the drug-free zone, but if we're talking about near minors, you apply the drug-free zone standard. So that's why we put in the 1,000 feet from parks and playgrounds, 1,000 feet from housing authorities, things like that. Because, one, if we're going to be licensing these facilities, the likelihood, I don't know how likely it is, no one really knows, but there have been federal arrests and federal prosecutions of both growers and dispensaries in other states in violation of the federal drug laws. Whether it's drug-free zone or not, I couldn't tell you. But the basic idea is, our position is that we don't want the city to be licensing activities where there's going to be an increased likelihood of federal prosecution.
Okay.
The second, the second issue, and it's much more speculative, and I think we can maybe talk about this during deliberations in greater depth, is that there's a possibility, and I have no evidence to back this up, but there's a possibility that to the extent that we are violating federal law and allowing dispensaries to open in violation of federal law, specifically those federal laws that US DOJ has said they're going to be prosecuting, there's the like, there's a possibility that the city could lose federal funding.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. On those, I think it would be helpful, where you said you're not sure on, you know, has this happened? If you could, if it's possible, point to where, I'm thinking particularly, maybe just looking at Colorado and Washington despite it being recreational, what, how it's being handled by US DOJ in those two states, if there are examples of them.
I will, tomorrow or tonight, I'll send a link out to citycouncil.net, which is to CaliforniaIsNormal.org, that is a, well, it's not, it's a private website that talks about prosecution, federal prosecution of medical marijuana activities.
And also, if there are any examples of impact on federal funding, if you run across those, I'd find those valuable to know. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, and just to add to that, I know, I mean, we've had dispensaries open for a while, not, operating in a gray area as we've heard, and so I'm curious to know if there's been any impact in Oregon for that same issue with the federal funding, if any jurisdictions in Oregon have already had issues since we know dispensaries have been open for a little bit.
As I mentioned, I'm not aware of any.
All right. Any further questions on this topic? Okay. We're going to take about a five-minute break and let people readjust themselves or leave as they see fit, and then when we come back, we'll continue with the second public hearing. Thank you.
... submitted on May 28th, 2014 by Salem Health to vacate four public rights-of-way encompassed by Mission Street, Church Street, Winter Street, and Pringle Parkway Southeast. Any person wishing to speak either for or against the proposal may do so in person or by attorney at the public hearing. The criteria that are applicable to the decision are Oregon Revised Statute 271-080 through 271230, and Salem Revised Code 255-065. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Thank you very much. And we have a staff report. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Judy Jonda. I'm a transportation planner with the Public Works Department. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record. This is a public hearing to consider a petition submitted by Salem Health to vacate four rights-of-way, I should say, unopened rights-of-way that were planted in the late 1800s, including a right-of-way for Cottage Street, Leslie Street, and two alley rights-of-way. The total area to be vacated is approximately 81,411 square feet. Salem Health has asked the city to vacate these rights-of-way in order to allow for the construction of the new outpatient rehabilitation center. This area shows the location of the existing hospital building and the footprint of the proposed outpatient rehabilitation center in relation to the rights-of-way which are proposed to be vacated, which are shown in yellow. As I mentioned, this is a petition-initiated vacation. All of the required consents of the abutting and affected property owners have been obtained, and on August 11th, the city council authorized the city manager to set the date for the public hearing. Salem Revised Code requires that eight criteria be met before vacating public right-of-way. The staff report includes the details on how each criterion is met. The first three criteria examine whether the proposed vacations will affect the provision of existing or proposed public services, facilities, or utilities to and through the area. In this case, these four- or utilities to and through the area. In this case, these four rights-of-way are not currently used for public transportation purposes, and there are no adopted plans that call for the extension of transportation facilities through these rights-of-way. All abutting properties have access to the existing public street network. These rights-of-way do, however, contain a portion of Pringle Creek, oops, a portion of Pringle Creek, and a 36-inch storm main and a water line, which will, are planned to be relocated as part of the construction of the rehabilitation center project. Therefore, staff is recommending that the following conditions be applied to the vacation: that the petitioner provide a setback and maintenance easement for Pringle Creek, and provide easements over the existing storm main and water service until new facilities are constructed and the existing facilities can be abandoned with easements quick claimed by the city. These criterion, excuse me, these criterion, excuse me, with these conditions, the vacation complies with all eight criteria. In accordance with Salem Revised Code, the city council may, at its discretion, require a petitioner to pay an assessment of special benefit. As compensation for the assessment of special benefit, staff is recommending that the petitioner dedicate five feet of right-of-way along their Church Street right-of-way, or Church Street frontage, and construct an eight-foot wide sidewalk with an enhanced landscaping. This is a unique opportunity to provide a distinctive tree-lined walkway that would strengthen the pedestrian connection between two important city resources, Pringle Park and Bush Pasture Park. It is recommended that the city council approve the vacation of the four rights-of-way subject to the following conditions: that the petitioner provide easements for the construction, maintenance, and repair and replacement of the existing municipal and utility facilities, and provide a creek and open channel setback and maintenance easement for Pringle Creek, and transfer land for the dedication of additional right-of-way to the city, and construct pedestrian improvements along Church Street in compensation for the assessment of special benefit. In summary, with these recommended conditions, the proposed right-of-way vacation is consistent with the Salem Transportation System Plan and Revised Codes, and furthers the public interest by releasing unneeded public property. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from counselors? Councilor Tesler?
Thank you. I do have a handful of questions, so I can't see Chuck's head.
I'm sorry. You know what? I think I just made a mistake, because actually, we do have time for questions, but we always do that after we have public testimony first.
Oh, okay.
So, hold that thought.
I'm going to.
Okay, we're going to go into public testimony. We have one person who's signed up.
The petitioner?
Yes.
You can just ask, ask him if he wants to speak.
All right, and would the applicant petitioner care to speak? No. All right, okay, we do have a person timed up. John Christensen, welcome, Mr. Christensen. And I need to ask, just for clarification, I know that you are.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to ask if you are representing SCAN, or whether you are here as an individual. If you're representing SCAN, then we have a different timeframe for you.
I'll try to stay to three minutes, ma'am, if you want. It's fine.
Well, it's fine. If you're representing the association, that would be helpful to know.
Well, here's the, first of all, for the record, ma'am, John Christensen, for the record, my address, mailing address is PO Box 534 Salem, Oregon 97308-dash-zero-five-three-four, for the record. And I'm here because I became aware of the report, which I think was available to the public on Friday. It's a 70-page report. I looked at it, I perused it briefly. Some of the graphics, attachments one through six, are difficult to read. And so I would like to ask that the record be kept open until October 13th, which allows this to be brought forward to the SCAN board, which next meets on October 8th. I serve as co-chair of the SCAN Parks and Recreation Committee. I'm a member of the SCAN Land Use and Transportation Committee, and I also serve on the Pringle Creek Watershed Council. That allows individuals to analyze, review, and report back and make suggestions to you. We also have, how far am I away from my three minutes? Okay, we also have a study group, which now is going into its third year. Greenway Bridges Study Group, where we participated in the mitigation analysis under Section 106 for the Winter Street Bridge. Those folks have been intimately involved in analysis of this area for, now we're going into our third year. I'd like to show you, if I can, something on the vicinity map, please, if I can do this right. Scott? Okay. Up, up on the map, ma'am, or mayor, you, you will see, it's not here, but this is Church Street. Church Street runs, as most of the folks know, on a north-south axis, certainly up to State Street, and that is a critical pedestrian, bikeway, pathway for our neighborhood. Because if you take this map here, you'll see if the development proceeds with the hospital from Church and to east to 12th, it's going to be an institutional, predominantly parking lot area. And then if you go over to High Street, Gaddy Hill, it's very diff, it's very high, it's very difficult for walking, for biking. I think most of us know that hill. Kind of hops over. So, the end result is Church Street is the significant pedestrian, walking connection to downtown, the business district, Bush Park, Pringle. The other thing I would like to just throw out is that Elizabeth Lord, when she was on the Parks Board back in the 19, maybe 30s, one of her visions was connectivity between Pringle Park and Bush Pasture Park.
I have to draw your attention to the red light.
There's my three minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Christensen?
Thank you very much.
All right, appreciate your testimony.
Ma'am, if I can interject, it's a verb beep. I think the staff report was very good.
Thank you, and I think our city attorney may have some counsel for us as to the record being held open, or the.
First, a point of clarification on the, on the staff report. The staff report was released to the public on the 15th, not on Friday. Secondly, the, as far as the request to keep the record open, to continue the hearing, state law requires us to, at a minimum, keep the record open for a minimum of seven days. So, you're, you're welcome to make a motion however you like. You can do it to continue the hearing, or you can do it to close the hearing now, since no one else has appeared to testify, and keep the record open to allow written testimony.
All right, Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the city council approve vacation of four rights-of-way located between Mission Street Southeast, Church Street Southeast, Winter Street Southeast, and Pringle Parkway, subject to the follow, to the conditions we have just reviewed. The petitioner to provide easements for the construction, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing municipal utility facilities, the petitioner to provide a creek and open channel setback and maintenance easement for Pringle Creek, and the petitioner to transfer land for dedication of additional right-of-way to the city, and construct pedestrian improvements along Church Street Southeast as compensation for an assessment of special benefit.
I'll second that.
All right, I think our city attorney has a point of order.
Just let me clarify what I said a minute before. There's been a request to either hold the hearing open, or continue, or keep the record open, or hold the hearing open.
Was my motion not clear?
By state law, we are required to continue the hearing.
For seven days.
Or keep the record open for seven days.
And keep the record open for seven days for written comment.
So, your, your motion is premature, because we need to keep the record open first before you can make that motion.
Well, okay. Well, someone else can make that motion. I'm not interested.
I have a question. So if we kept the record open, when will we then?
Conceivably, we have a special meeting scheduled for the 29th. You could have deliberations on the 29th. Otherwise, you could keep the record open to the 29th, and then have deliberations on the 13th. Whoever wants to make the motion would.
Okay, so we can keep the record open for the rest of the week. How long should we, noon on Monday?
Sounds great.
Okay.
The 29th.
Okay, I'll move we keep the record open for written comment until noon Monday, the 29th, and deliberate on this at the special meeting on the 29th.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Clem to keep the record open until noon on September 29th. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just want to comment. This has been in front of the council since the 11th of August. There's nobody surprised by this. I find it difficult to understand how this slipped through the cracks as closely as the cracks are washed, are watched on this issue. So, I'm perfectly willing to keep it open, but I really find it less than believable that nobody noticed this from August 11th, where I'm looking at it right now. So, it, there's been oodles of opportunity for this neighbor, well, really not for this neighborhood group, for the group of people who are interested solely in this issue, I believe, to try to block this project, to have had time to prepare themselves for this hearing tonight. So, I really, you know, sometimes I guess we're stuck, and on this one, we are, but on the 29th, I hope we vote and get this thing behind us. This is a great idea. We are gaining the linear park we wanted, that actually connects us to Pringle, to the path at Pringle Creek, takes us all the way down to Riverfront. This is exactly what we've been working on for geez, six, seven, eight years now, to get this done, and here's the chance to do it.
Is there further discussion? All right, the motion on the floor, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will now proceed to special orders of business. Councilor Bennett, do you have, let's see, Councilor Tesler, do you have a motion for special orders of business for the item that you were pulling, 3.2A?
Excuse me, just.
You all right? Okay, Councilor Tesler?
Yes. Sorry, we flipped back and forth. I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation on this one.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Tesler and seconded by Councilor Bennett. Is there discussion? Councilor Tesler?
Yes, thank you. I would, first of all, like to compliment staff on their extensive involvement in this process, which unfortunately, I've only been able to attend a couple of meetings, but Councilor Bennett, I believe, has been to most of them. And this process is a really great process. It's really interesting to go, and all the neighbors come, and basically, they lay out the maps, and the neighbors just say, okay, this will work, and this won't work, and this is what we should do, and there's a bit of dreaming that goes on, and there's a bit of kind of angst that goes on from time to time. But for the most part, I think people have been really pleased with this effort, I mean, really pleased. And we've seen some really good ideas come out of it. I mean, the State Street redevelopment, and all the Willamette ideas, and the things that are coming off 14th Street, it's really impressive. And this is the kind of planning that's exciting, because it involves direct, you know, direct input from the neighborhood, and the neighbors get to say, this is what works for us. This is what we would like to see in our neighborhood. And I really saw staff bend over backwards to accommodate people's ideas, and people had some pretty fruity ideas at times, but you know, I mean, staff really, really accommodated everybody, and I have to say, it was really well done. So, kudos to staff, and I'm very excited to see this product, you know, when it finally evolves, because this is an area that has struggled, and I think we're going to see some positive things come out of this plan, and I'm pretty excited about that. My only sadness is that I'm not sure if I'm going to see it come to fruition, but I'll be in the background.
Councilor Bennett?
Yeah, I want to join Councilor Tesler. I did get to participate in a number of these meetings, and I really want to compliment Lisa Anderson Ogilvy and Eunice Kim. They did just a great job in facilitating these meetings. These meetings, if you, if you get a chance to do this, I'm already putting in for two of my neighborhoods to do this again, because it worked so well. They, they did a great job of facilitating it, as Councilor Tesler said. Out of it came a really full discussion of redevelopment along State Street, sort of visioning what that would look like. We heard from Willamette University on some of their thinking in their neighborhood. It was just extraordinarily positive. It involved, I don't know, scores and scores of neighbors. I mean, and there was a real core of people in a steering committee that worked very hard on this. This is really a great way to do neighborhood plans, this two at once, and I'm very interested. I'm hoping they'll take a real close look at Grant and Highland, because they share so much in common. It's a real, a really, a good way to do it, where you get these neighborhoods that fit together quite well. They have very common characteristics, very common values. That was interesting, listening to NIN and Cessna members. You couldn't tell who was who by the time the thing really got going. It was a great process. So if, if I lose on the Grant-Hielen thing, and you get it, I really recommend taking part in this. It's really very, very interesting.
Thank you. Councilor Dickey, followed by Councilor Nanki.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank all of the residents and the neighbors who came out and participated in this, because I know it's a significant time commitment on their part. I know that the city will not come out and do this unless the neighbors are completely 100% committed to that. So, I really appreciate that, and the fact that they did that, then that can give our other neighborhoods some opportunity to see what can be done, and to learn from what the other neighborhoods have done. I was in a presentation with one of my neighborhood groups, where they were talking about the process, and it was kind of like, eyes glazed over, wow, this is a huge project. Now that this one is done, we'll have some opportunity to discuss it, and look and see what can we extract from that, and is it possible, and we can see that, well, it is possible. Now, can we learn from that, and will it be feasible for other neighborhoods? So I really appreciate, not only the staff, because I know they did a great job, but the neighbors who put in so much of their own time in this project.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question, where are we on the agenda? This was originally moved in additions to 5A from 3.2A, which is as it was pulled.
Three, we're on 3.2A, and we're having discussion following the introduction of the motion.
But the motion is really 5A, because we changed that at the beginning of the meeting?
Well, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we moved down in through that, and whether or not staff had a presentation, which is why we wanted to move that to 5A?
No, that's not why we're moving it to 5A.
Right. I was confused as to why we moved it earlier.
It was simply pulled, so, for purpose of discussion.
Well, it was moved to special orders, and sometimes that's where staff moves things, if we want to do presentations.
Understood, Councilor. It was a mistake to move it in the additions calendar.
Oh, okay.
It all works out in the end.
Cool.
We don't have a staff presentation.
So, another question, then. We've had Morningside now, and Cessna. Are we going to ask staff then go back and kind of evaluate how those two worked out, and make potential modifications for moving forward, or kind of?
No, I asked Mr. Gross to respond.
Glenn Gross, Community Development Director. Yes, that is our intention, is to look at our, our experience with the two we've done now, and come forward to, first, the city manager, and then potentially the council proposing. and come forward to first the city manager and then potentially the council proposing the next plan. And it would probably be a combined two neighborhoods at once kind of thing.
And do we know what timeframe we may expect to see?
Well, we'd be proposing this as part of our next budget cycle. We probably won't be done with this one, even though we're talking about this tonight, it's just initiating it, and we have a series of steps to go through. So, we're probably looking at probably the bulk of the work wouldn't be done until the next fiscal year.
All right. Councilor Clem?
Yes, I'm fully supportive of this, and it sounds like it's, yeah, it's going to be great. We're directing the Planning Commission to hold the hearing, and then we're directing the Urban Development Director to schedule a hearing for the Planning Commission. Is there a reason for the redundancy? The Planning Commission holds its own hearings, so just what's the fine point I'm missing by number three of the recommended actions?
You know, I'm not sure I heard the whole question, but if I don't get it right, just ask me again. The procedures we're going through is prescribed specifically for neighborhood plans under chapter, under the comprehensive planning chapter.
We're just repeating.
We're just going through.
We're just repeating our procedure.
Exactly.
Just seem weird.
That is the process. We, I know the planning administrator has a very strong desire to reform that procedure at the next code update.
We're telling the Planning Commission what their hearings are. It just seems weird. Okay.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business, and I draw your attention to an information report, reports that are in your packet. We'll move on to ordinances. Would the city recorder please introduce the ordinances? 8.1A?
Yes. Ordinance Bill Number 1814 relating to the Broadway High Street Overlay Zones and Off-Suite Parking, amending SRC 613-020, 614-020, 615-020, and 806-010.
Thank you. And is there a motion? Councilor Bennett?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Seeing none? Hearing none? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Will the recorder please introduce 8.1B?
Ordinance Bill Number 1914 relating to the Riverfront Overlay Zone, amending SRC 617 through 015 and 617-020.
Thank you. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to engross ordinance bill number 1914 to amend the limitations and qualifications sections of Table 617-2 to state, quote, "relocation of an existing nonprofit shelter from the CB zone serving more than 75 people, provided the shelter continually existed in the CB zone as of September 1, 1993."
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benars. Is there discussion on the motion?
Do you want to know?
Seeing none? All those, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Would the recorder please introduce 8.1C? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilor Bennett, did your motion include a, to move to second reading, to advance to second reading on that as engrossed?
Yes, it did.
Oh, all right. Are we good?
I'm just checking to make sure it's the right answer.
That's the right answer?
It does now.
Okay.
It does now. All right. Sorry. The recorder will introduce 8.1C.
And if I can interrupt her for a moment, 8.1C relates to the vacation, which you are putting off to the 29th, so you don't need to do first reading of that.
Oh, all right. Then we're moving on to 8.2A, second reading. Recorder, please call the roll.
The title first, is that right?
Oh, yes. All right. You can do that first.
Okay, thank you. Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 2014 relating to the Downtown Parking District, amending SRC 102-045 and 102-065, and creating new provisions.
Councilor Bennett?
Aye.
Councilor Tesler?
Aye.
Councilor Nicky?
Aye.
Councilor Claussen?
Aye.
Councilor Dickey?
Aye.
Councilor Rogers?
Aye.
Councilor Benards?
Aye.
Councilor Clem?
Strong aye.
And Mayor Peterson? Here, aye. Thank you. All right. Our next order of business would be public comment. We have no one signed up. Was there anyone in the chambers who did want to speak at this time?
No.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
You want to speak?
We have no new business, and we are adjourned.